Next item, please.
First budget amendment for 2023-2024, Mr. Thomas Wall.
Good evening, Mr. President Berry and Dr. Olyko and Board Trustees. We're going to talk briefly about a budget amendment that's on the agenda today, and I will try to be brief. We covered about forty-five minutes in the Finance Committee, but I won't go that long today. So as we normally do, we adopt a budget amendment twice a year, usually around this time, probably usually a little earlier, and again at the end of the year for the current fiscal year. Just so you know, for next year, our budget calendar is changing because we have a budget calendar that takes anywhere from January to June to adopt a budget. With the Ramadan, you know, holiday, it's going to change slightly. We're going to go from two meetings in June down to one. So you'll have the, you know, the privilege of having me speak today in April and in May about the budget process. You'll be tired of the budget process once we get done in the next couple of months. There is one slight correction on this date. We originally were talking about moving the board meeting from Monday to Tuesday, the ninth. It actually has moved to Thursday, the eleventh. So I haven't made the correction on that one. And by law, we have to have a budget approved by the July first of every year. And when there's significant change, we're required to do amendments, hence why we're doing the amendment now. And I'll just keep going unless I hear any comments or Mr. Berry says, "Slow down," because I'll try not to.
I'm saying, "Slow down."
So as you know, we always like to put the pictorial graph of our budget process. You can see there's what we call buckets, and the far right is the most restricted budget, the Capital Project Fund. As we move left across the screen, it gets to be less restricted. You hear me say this every time because it's good to reinforce this issue. And pretty soon, you'll be ready yourself in your sleep when you just hear it year after year after year. And so we mostly concentrate on the general fund because all the others is restricted funds. So just to touch base on the student counts, for this current year, we expected about a forty-nine, almost fifty, student decrease in our budget for this year. We were actually three hundred and fifty-seven students down more than that. So that created, you know, an operational change that we had to do on our loss of revenue. But it also means we're overstaffed at this point, which means it's good because we have very low class sizes for our schools. You know, it's not something we can just maintain forever, but it's something we're going to have to address. This is just looking at the pies, just to kind of add a bigger value or macro value. You can see that a lot of the percentages haven't changed. So this, on the left side, is our original budget. On the right hand, our right side, I don't need to go into details, but you can see nothing significantly changed on our revenue side for all funds. This is just a breakdown of the numbers. Sometimes, you know, a pictorial graph doesn't tell the whole story. This is just the monetary side, you know, so we're actually a little less in revenues because of a variety of reasons, mostly because of grants and where they fall at and the use of them. But nothing significantly changed in the revenue side on the numbers. On the expense side, it's very similar. As you can see, you know, just on the macro level, not much has changed on the percentages, slightly here and there. But overall, what we originally budgeted came to fruition. All right, now we're going to talk more on the general fund side. So on the general fund expenditure side, you can see that majority of money is in blue, which is our instruction. As any school district, we want to spend a majority of our money on the instructional, which is the direct expense with the child. So that's where you see a majority of our costs. And we're very proud to say that, you know, fifty-eight percent of our general fund budget is spent in the classroom, which is very important. And that's where we have focused on it tremendously. So a significant change, as you can see, we're about four hundred and six students less on an FTE basis, not headcount, but we go by FTE for financial purposes. And so our staff was estimated about twenty-five more positions over what we normally would have had if we have known about the student loss. So again, normally the process would be, and we're not laying off anybody, we're very healthy at this point. But normally, we would go through the process to reduce staff, to bring us in line. Fortunately, there have been many grants given by the state, and unfortunately, the grants don't come on a very timely basis. You know, we're now just receiving grants that they approved back in July of last year. So we are moving people around quickly to adjust for that. And so General Fund has been able to absorb the student loss without any changes in staffing. So again, we're not laying off any staffing, we're not proposing anything. But as we go through next year's staffing process, we'll use our current student count plus what Student Services believe will be our new student count for next year. And I believe, is Mr. Masure is here?
I seen him earlier.
He'll be here in a minute. He's probably in his office working, that's what he does. So, so that way, you know, the staffing process going forward will really have a tendency to what we do next year for staffing. On the categorical side, which is our grants, as you can see, there's thirteen grants that have been new this year. Some are one-time grants, some are going to continue from year to year. But the state is changing its model from going to just money in the foundation allowance to now grants for specific purposes. So which is hard for budgeting because, one, we don't get the money at the beginning of the year. And also, most staffing is for, or grants are for staffing. As Mr. Salee just talked about briefly, you know, earlier, just in the last presentation, a lot of new grants have come in, and we've hired social workers and stuff like that. So there's that constant movement of positions due to the way states are now funding club education and missioning it. And the dollar value of those new grants here are about fourteen point six million. And just in the last couple of weeks, we've got a couple more that came in. So I didn't want to just change the presentation because I already said that, but they're continuously coming in as things get changed or they do supplemental funding for additional grants. So when you look at the significant changes for the revenue, when we adopted budget by July first last year, contracts weren't settled until the summer. So we had to make adjustments for that. The transfers to capital projects. So in the past, we had a lot of ESSER money, you know, one hundred and thirty-eight million dollars in ESSER money that we spent. We spent roughly fifty million of that on capital projects. And with the ESSER funds, we're also allowed to move some of our operating into it that made sense, like for mental health and all that. So we generated surplus over that time. Now, with the ESSER funds ending September thirtieth, a lot of that flexibility has now gone away. So we have less money we're able to transfer to the general fund. So that's how we paid for a lot of our capital improvements without hitting the general fund. You know, the whole early college division that we're buying two buildings, we actually bought two buildings and renovating. We had the Hague Edition. Those were not monies originally budgeted, but we were to have that surplus and take care of those things. And those are items that the board has approved over the last year and a half for those additional funds. So the funding, you know, a lot of our money moved back into grants for ESSER funding or into the general fund. So that's where we're making a lot of these adjustments, and thankfully, there was a lot of grants we can move those funds to. And the one-time retirement costs, the state loves giving us money and then saying, "You can hold it for five days and give it back." But unfortunately, it inflates our numbers, so when you start looking at ratios from year to year, it's very hard to compare things and say what's going differently because of the pass-through money the state gives us for retirement.
And Tom, you just stepped in. You wanted him to come up, I think, on that slide?
He can, just for the question thing, because I'm sure the board will have questions about staffing or student count. So this is just looking at just the general fund. In there, we have the general fund, enhancement fund, athletics, that all qualifies as our general fund. So there's three pots of money that we combined for that. And if you look on the far right, we break it down by object code, which is more descriptive of what the actual cost is. On the left side is by function code, so instruction is the direct classroom. That's what we're required to do by law, so that's why those numbers have to be there. But if you look on the far right-hand side, if you add up the salary, benefits, bike and retirement, workers' comp and other benefits, it's over eighty percent. So just reiterating again, we're a service agency, and a majority of our cost does go through staffing. Looking at the other funds, just briefly, special revenue funds, you'll see in the far left-hand side, the original budget and the new budget. You can see that the state funding went from forty million to sixty-two million, and that's accounting for a lot of those special grants that came in. You know, so that's where our, our funding model is changing slightly in how we get funds from the state. On the far right-hand side, the capital project funds. Don't be over alarmed by the loss on the bottom of roughly thirteen million. We're spending down the ESSER funds. And also, last year, we have the Energy Improvement Bond. We're spending that down this year. So by next year, in the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five, you'll see the remaining of the ESSER and the energy bonds. And you'll see that we'll have very little fund balance in capital projects going forward, which will lead us to future discussions about a potential bond at some point down the line. And that's just breaking down the three notes I just had, just for case if the public said it, they know what I just said in the previous slide. And that's it. That's a quick update. We're healthy, we're doing good. But, you know, we'll have some hurdles to look at when we look forward to the twenty-four, twenty-five, which we'll discuss at the next board meeting.
Trustee Watts?
So, Mr. Wall, going back to slide number ten, and this is the one that outlines all of the MDE grants. What does the FP stand for?
Michigan Department of Ed.
No, no, FP.
Funded projects. So in Dearborn, we actually have a separate fund for funded projects. That way, we can account for all the revenues for grants in one area.
Yes.
Some school districts will spread it out and put it in their general fund and special revenue funds. We do one particular fund for all grants in, that are restricted on how they get spent.
So in terms of these grants, are these per, are they allocated based on the school year?
On a state fiscal year. They go from October through June or September thirtieth of the next year, which makes us dealing it under over two fiscal years.
Okay.
So there's a lot of counting and regulations of how we can do that.
Correct. And then are these going to be, are these reoccurring funds?
You took one of my slides for next month. So there is roughly thirteen or fourteen grants that are only one time. Now, one time to the state of Michigan, you would think it means they only happen once. But they'll say, "All right, it's one time, and so we get the funding for that year." Next state aid package, they'll say, "We're going to do it again." So it sometimes occurs and sometimes it doesn't. But for budgeting, it makes it very difficult because we can't assume they're going to do it again next year.
And then are any of these limited to say that because you received these funds last year, that you can't apply for them next year?
It all depends on how they pass it.
Correct. So part of it, I wanted to bring this up, is that these are funds that are not guaranteed going forward, that you can reapply necessarily.
Right.
Or that they'll exist next year.
So during our budget process, we have to assume they're not going to?
Correct.
Unless we get some kind of, very rarely do they give multi-year grants. Like at risk funds, they said, "We're going to fund it forever." But all out of the one-time ones like cybersecurity, we know that one's going away. That was a special allocation. But twenty-three G, it's a big grant this year, I think like twenty-two point three million, two four, four million. And so we're going to build up our program to deal with students for tutoring and after-school type of activities. But then next year, we don't know if they're going to do it, so we're going to have to scale back down.
Correct.
Which makes it very difficult for us to budget forward because of our revenue source was of the fund balance. I mean, in the student-per-student allowance that we get every year, be easy to keep planning. But for grants, we're up and down, so that's why we want to keep it out of the general fund, so it's not affecting our general fund operating from year to year.
All right, thank you.
Trustee McDonald?
Just a quick question. On the rare occasion, like you said, that they may fund a grant for multiple years.
Correct.
Would you still have to reapply for that each year?
Yes, typically, we still have to submit a budget that they would have approved.
Okay, right.
Trustee Moses?
Yeah. Any money from the ESSER funds are directly funding positions, FTEs?
They were for the three years during the COVID, you know, environment. But our budget ended June thirtieth of last year. Some schools continued another year, but we stopped because we knew, being a larger district, we'd have to plan and, and go forward with that. So we actually made a decision last year to end at June thirtieth, take the remaining funds and use it for capital purposes.
And for the grants that we're applying, are we missing on any grants? Or is our district ineligible to apply for some grants because of?
We apply for everything we're eligible for. And then, you know, if we already have a pre-planned purpose, there are some things new, like you'll see on here, the FAFSA challenge, our completion challenge. You know, that grant was approved last year, but we just got it maybe a month ago. So those are the things that, until they come out with the guidelines of how you can spend it, we, sometimes we have to go on the fly because it's a very short timeframe, because we have to spend it this year, unless they tell us we can carry it over for next year.
Trustee Petrikov?
Okay, I didn't want Mr. Masure to have to be in here for no good reason. So I have a question on student count. All right, we lost four hundred and six students, basically. My understanding is, is that many of them, and we're not a unique district. I think probably from what I'm reading, almost every district was losing students. I'm not sure if the number is alarming at this point in time, but we had originally planned on only forty-eight students. So it's a significant difference. And that cost us about seven million dollars in per pupil funding. Now, it's my understanding that the state has made up the difference because they have a grant program to supplement when student count goes down dramatically. So we're not hurting at this point in time. My, from what I'm hearing is, is many of those students, not all, but many, have experienced the wonderful world of virtual schooling through COVID, and now have found an option other than being in a classroom with virtual schools that may, in their mind, be an easier choice than the rigor of coming into a classroom anymore. And so are opting to leave us for that environment. Now, while we offer a virtual school setting, some other virtual schools at our charter schools may, may not, in their eyes, be as demanding. And from what I'm understanding, because we've heard it from certain students in the past when we were looking for options for them, they wanted to, to attend these virtual schools because of that. My concern is, do you see this as an ongoing trend or an offshoot of, you know, post-COVID environment that will kind of reset itself because the kids would rather be in a classroom and, and with their peers in a physical way at some point? Or do you anticipate that we should continue to plan on these kinds of losses going forward?
So the stabilization isn't expected until two thousand and twenty-eight. That's like from Bridge, Bridge, Michigan, the Meckinac Center. They're looking at twenty, twenty-two eight as being the, the time when everything stabilizes since post-COVID. You've got to remember, there was, from two thousand and, I think it was sixteen to two thousand and twenty-three, there was forty thousand less births. So all those students would have been in kindergarten, I'm sorry, in two thousand and eighteen. So all those students would have been in kindergarten in two thousand and twenty-three. Then we had a lot of students, like statewide, from grade one that left and didn't come back in grade three. Because the second year, and when they would be in second grade, there was, I think, Michigan, the state of Michigan reported, I'll give you the number in a second, but that's, that's an issue from the younger ages. When you get to the high school, it's like you said, the lower expectations, the lesser expectations, the lower requirement for a graduation. We require twenty, twenty-three credit, or twenty-two credit hours, or is it twenty-three?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three, yeah. I'm reading too many numbers. So twenty-three credit hours. A lot of virtual schools require as little as nineteen credit hours, some twenty. So students can graduate quicker. And then you have the Penn Foster program where the education isn't very good, but at the same time, they get the credits that they need, and then they're accepted at, to most community colleges, at least in our state.
Mr. Masure, speaking to the mic, please.
I'm sorry. Penn Foster is, you know, students can pretty much buy their diploma. The level of education isn't good at all. They, they're not very prepared when they get to community college, but they are accepted into community college with a Penn Foster diploma. And, you know, you have students that can graduate with, you know, with as little as eighteen months. So you can start college at fifteen years old and, you know, you're taking remedial classes in a lot of cases, but at the same, and college is going to take you now three years, community college as opposed to two, but that's one of the options. But we're losing a lot of students, you know, to not just Penn Foster, but other virtual schools as well. And one of our high schools, just this year, we lost two hundred and forty-two students. And ninety-one were to Penn Foster, sixteen moved to other districts throughout the state, twenty left the country, didn't return. And then you had nine to charter schools, and the rest were all to different charter schools throughout the state that were virtual charter schools throughout the state. Most charter schools tend to be virtual. So, and again, it's just lesser expectations and, you know, students are able to graduate like, you know, in a lot lesser, a lot shorter time. So that's, that's what that's, that's all about.
All right, then, thank you.
Trustee Watts?
Can you repeat those stats again? How many did we lose of the, from the four hundred and six students? How many were high schoolers?
Two hundred, no, no. I said, two hundred and forty-two students that we lost from high school. Two hundred and forty-two students. We lost ninety-one to Penn Foster, twenty out of country, sixteen to other districts, nine to charter schools where people go in person. And the rest were to just, you know, River Rouge Charter School, Hazel Park, you know, all virtual academies though.
So of the ninety-one that went to Penn Foster, do we know which high schools they're coming from, that they're leaving?
Which, of our high schools? Yes.
Which ones are they? Or do we have that number?
All three, yeah.
But do we have one where, where it seems to be a trend?
Well, we lost a lot of female students from, to Penn Foster, freshmen's students or students that didn't even go into Etzel Ford. So we lost, I think that number was fifty-eight. I don't have that in front of me, but if I recall correctly, it was like fifty-eight students, all females coincidentally, that, you know, from Etzel Ford's freshman class.
Did they start at Etzel Ford?
Some of them didn't even start.
I think, I mean, that seems like a, a trend that I would like to make sure that we get ahead of, especially if we're losing that many. I mean, that's a significant chunk of our freshman class, especially our females that are withdrawing from the classroom. And I think that probably at the end of this board, just to get, or at the end of this meeting, to get a more detailed report. Because are we anticipating the same amount of loss? What was our loss last year? I don't remember what that was.
What do you mean, our loss of students?
Students, yes.
Yeah, yeah, probably from projections or from the year before. It's about six hundred, does that sound right? Or is that too high? Too high? Three hundred?
We can go back, we can go back and get that.
So I guess what I'm asking is to see what has it been since COVID? And if we can start seeing what is the trend, then what are we putting in place so that if there is a loss, are these students coming back? Number one, if they're coming back, I don't know if we can find that, but I think I would like to see a longitudinal study so that we can not only predict it going forward, but if they're coming back, what is the learning loss that's going to be happening? If they're going to Penn Foster, what is about Penn Foster and fifty-eight females that are making us, making them lose, thinking that Penn Foster online is more appealing than in person?
Well, what's appealing is you get your degree a lot, your diploma a lot quicker. That's what's the appealing side.
But if I were a freshman, I wouldn't think that that would be appealing as a female. I think there's got to be, I, I guess I would like to do a deeper dive.
So pre, can I comment on?
Please.
Pre-pandemic, we started talking, it was Ms. Peterson and I, we were talking in cabinet about a virtual school. And then pandemic, obviously, it was for certain purposes. We've now had this issue on cabinet agenda of discussions. What are some things possibly we could do with the virtual school to possibly, you know, to catch some of the students that may go other places, and maybe they might remain with us. And the board obviously has approved the virtual school for out-of-district as well, but that might be an avenue we can look at, maybe some possible changes to pick up some of these students. Because it was the same purpose, it was some of the female students we were losing. And I know, Trustee Moses, you were concerned years ago when that was happening, that we started looking at that pre-pandemic. And so maybe this trend is happening again, but also the fact that it, you know, it's an easier to get that, you know, the credits, it's less credits, it's an easier way to go to get your diploma. So we have to look at that. We did just survey all neighboring districts to see what are the credits, just because that was one consideration. But of, most are between twenty-two and twenty-four credits, so we're twenty-three. So most of our, within the county, the Metro Bureau tri-county area.
Adam also did research from the three high schools, correct? Do you remember the numbers, any numbers offhand? I don't. So he got some information from all three high schools about the number of students we were losing and where they were going.
So I'll ballpark it. I wasn't planning on being up here, but that's okay. So, Mr. Masure, the numbers he provided were net increase/decrease, right? Because you always have kids moving in and out. So at the high school level, really, there's only one way to really track where kids go. And that's when kids leave you, request, request for records and where we send the records to. So I asked our high school to look at how many kids have left. So again, this isn't net, this isn't the net change, because we always have kids coming back and forth. So over the last three semesters, so that was fall and then last year, there was about a thousand total students who left our high schools. Again, net, that, that's not net, that's just moving out. We probably had, there was only two hundred, then eight hundred came to us. Of those thousand kids, around three hundred went to Penn Foster, which is a pretty significant number. I think Mr. Masure said it more kindly than should be. Penn Foster will boast on their website that you can be, go from zero credits to a diploma in six months. And most kids average nine months. When I looked at their standards and I tried to stand up just Algebra I, it wasn't even close. The depth of the rigor that kids are moving their way through. A lot of our students do enroll at Henry Ford College. I did have a conversation with Henry Ford College about the impact of our students there, and, and they assured me they were going to be looking into, into that as well. There are a wide range of reasons why students would go to a program where you can be done in a year. Some of our students need to work and help at home. Some of our students are struggling, and school is difficult for them in our traditional high schools. And then you have a ton of other reasons too. So every one of our students that leaves to Penn Foster does have a different story. I would say to Mr. Masure's point, the goal of being done with your diploma in as little as a year without necessarily having to go through the same rigor is, is a draw for many of our students. And then being able to hop into Henry Ford College is, is another draw for them. When I did meet with the Henry Ford people, they told me that Penn Foster was a large portion of their applicants for enrollment in comparison to some of the other districts around here. So, yeah, we're aware of it at the district level. For many of our students that have come back, they theoretically have credits in Algebra I or Algebra II. Part of our transcript process when students come back to the high schools is to test them before we give them credit. We want to stand it up. Many of those students will not, cannot pass our test for credit, and then they have to end up retaking courses. So we haven't found that the rigor or the integrity of the credits has a ton of validity. But I would love to be able to tell you, hey, this is, this is the kid who is there and why. But it's, it's all over the place. It's all over the place.
Mr. Masure, I believe Trustee Watts is going to ask for a deeper dive, a report on request. Just to take a note, because I'll probably forget, those fifty-eight incoming ninth graders into Etzel Ford that we lost?
I, I believe so, yeah.
Yeah.
The numbers I gave, by the way, were one.
Yeah, no, part of the report, I want to find, I want to know if there's any siblings at the elementary or middle school, please. Trustee McDonald?
Um, yeah. The one thing, when we were talking about the Penn Foster issue, and I know that it's hard to put all the students into a box, but I just want to make sure that these students, who may be thinking that this is the right and appropriate thing for them because of the quick graduation, and are we able to get some message to them saying that it's really short-sighted? Because if you do have a goal of going out of college, then not only are you going to probably spend time with remedial classes, you're going to be paying for those classes, or your family's going to be paying for those classes. So I just want to make sure that students get all the information that they can, to make a less short-sighted decision.
It boils down to, as was said earlier, when somebody else was presenting, is relationships and trust and so on. So that's one of the things that, you know, you would hope that people could see that, okay, either I'm going to, I'm going to put in the time, whether I'm going to do it now in the high school years or do it in college when I have to take remedial classes to get to the college-level classes in order to, because they, they have to test for math and language arts, math and English at Henry Ford. So, so that's, that's the issue. The numbers I gave, by the way, were for one high school, not all three, the two hundred and forty-two. That was just at one of our high schools, just so you know.
Trustee Petrikov?
Okay, to finish up with this, I want to make it clear to the people who are watching, these virtual academies are getting almost the same amount of per pupil funding that we're getting as a full-service community school. They don't provide the same kind of opportunities. They don't provide any infrastructure, extracurriculars, anything. What they do provide is a place for a kid to have a What they do provide is a place for a kid to have a quick and easy exit out of high school, for, for many, not all. My concern is, is I don't want to give the impression that we're also looking at these students to bring them back as a dollar sign either. We're not, we're not trying to attract them back because we're losing money. We have to be prepared for that eventuality when we do a budget of what to anticipate, but that's not why I asked a question. I asked a question because we're doing a real disservice to the kids in this community. If they think, I'm going to slow, that they, they think that this is the route. And as it was already stated, how are, how are we going about messaging that it is a short-sighted decision? How do we reach the parents, if nothing else, that these students deserve better and we can provide better? And to encourage them, and as President Berry said, let's find out who their siblings may be. Who might also be looking at this as an easy route, rather than to stay here in a environment. That's going to make them a more whole person. And when they move on to a community college, if they so choose, that they're going to be much more successful at the end of the day. And be more productive community members.
Yeah. I mean, I will say, our graduation specialists spend a lot of time with students and families, our graduation specialists at the high schools. When they're having these conversations about what's the next move. And, you know, for some of our students, you know, whether they join trades programs or other programs. And we had some that fall into that category, not a huge chunk, maybe about a dozen, if I remember correctly. But you have some that will go down that path, which is fine. Not everybody's going to go the traditional, you know, four-year college bachelor's degree path, and that's understandable. But our graduation specialists do spend a lot of times with the families and so on. And sometimes because maybe they have a friend who's done that or what have you. So they kind of will say, well, you know, so-and-so graduated and he was only 16 years old and started college. And he might be, some, some of the students, you have to remember, they are pretty good academically. So some of them can handle it and, and be successful and go through college and still get out of, out of there after four or five years with a, with a bachelor's degree. But, you know, that doesn't work for everybody.
We've seen what the shortcuts to the driver's ed programs have, have given us with young people today. Who basically bought their driver's license without actually putting forth the effort to learn how to do it right. And I, I worry that this could be something that occurs in our educational system as well.
Trustee Watts?
So, and I think part of my question for all this report, because I'm always looking, how can we improve? Like what, what, are we doing something that is preventing these students from feeling comfortable going to the high school? I mean, I know we're going to always have those outliers that might just say, you know, because of family situations. And I've spoken with mom and dad, and this is what's best for the family unit, and this is my next step. Like, that's much different than hearing that it's going to be something that is preventing them from wanting to come into the schools. And I guess part of it is, we're talking about mental health. We're talking about, you know, we had the bond that, or the millage that was passed and the team that we were, you know, that we had that and all of our citizens and taxpayers. So I think part of it too is, can we do better to make sure that these students are choosing it because of life circumstances? And not something that we are not seeing. So my lens is always through the improvement or through the lens of like, what can we be doing better? To make sure that we're making school, I dare say, attractive, but like where they want to come in every day. And they want to socialize and they want to maybe be part of an art program or sports or whatever, those extracurriculars versus being isolated. Or perhaps in their, in their home all day. So I think that's, that's where I'm going through, through that lens.
A lot of that is the post-pandemic issues. So people got accustomed to being at home, like truancy, the amount of truancy cases we have this year in comparison to prior to COVID is not even close. I mean, it's way more now than it used to be.
Well, and when you had said the 58 females, initially when I said that they're freshmen, to me.
They didn't even give a support chance.
I'm thinking that it's the, through the lens of anxiety. Like, the whole idea is just too overwhelming. And that to me, I, I become worried because then it's, it's one of those, eventually it's going to come to fruition. So that's where I'm like, what is that source that is, is turning 58 females to say that they would rather do it online?
Right.
Trustee McDonald?
This is just unrelated, but I thought as, as the conversation was going on, you talked about students leaving to go into like building trades and things like that. Do you know if we've lost students and how many that might be? Probably not very many, but to the military?
To the military?
Yeah.
I don't know, I have no clue.
Okay, just curious.
Anybody else?
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Mashur.
But they could go a different route to get that, so that's. Okay, I didn't think so, I was just curious. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Wall? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you for your time.